I'd like to call the August 22nd, 2024 Town Board Meeting to Order. Ms. Marco, please call the roll.
Mr. Dobson is absent. Mr. Mastriani?
Present.
Mrs. Galucci?
Present.
Mr. Schlag?
Present.
And Mrs. Collins.
Present.
One absent, four present.
Okay, if the board is present, please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Galucci, will you please lead us?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I open up privilege of the floor, there's a couple announcements that I want to make. First, I'd like to say that starting Monday, August 26th, our Water District Five leak detection program is going to be started. That's in the northwestern area of town. So if you live in Fire District Seven or Fire District Six, if you see a company or men walking around where the mains are, they're looking for leaks, it should either say their shirts or their trucks will either say Consulting Engineering Incorporated or CEI Water Services. Okay? And the second announcement I'd like to make is if anybody wishes to speak, you need to sign up now. Okay? You don't need to sign in that you are here, but if you want to come to the podium and speak, you have to sign up. Okay? Anybody want to sign up? All right, we'll move to privilege of the floor. Thank you. Ms. Marco, is there anyone who wishes to speak?
Yes, Kathleen Conboy?
Conboy?
The boy. Did I say Conboy? Oh, I'm sorry.
People think I'm in the military, Conboy. I have a question about something that's on the agenda. The Resolution Number 331.24 on page three. It says an hourly rate of $30, but then it says $70, which is a...
It's seven, I'm sorry. We made the correction as here, it is $70 an hour.
Okay. I didn't put it over there, I'm sorry.
It was updated on the website, and we corrected it at the adjustment here.
Thank you. I want to speak a few minutes on the Whispering Pines development, which all of you were not here for when it was approved, but it's been seven years. I had dark hair then, and every time we feel like we're getting close, those of us who've been with this from the beginning, really want to live there, this is a wonderful thing for our town, and I think you all agree. I've spoken with most of you individually, and I'm not saying the town is at fault for the delays, but what I am saying is I wish you could work with us to get us in there. Those of us who have been waiting, those who have their houses on the market, those who have already sold their homes because there have been so many deadlines. One of the things we specifically wanted months ago was what does the developer need to do to complete his part of the bargain? And we were told that he knew what he needed to do. He had been given information. And yet, a week ago, this three-page list was given out that he hadn't even gotten yet, I don't believe, because his name is on it. Those of us at the meeting said, could we please have a copy of it? And we're given a copy because we said we'd to foil it or whatever we had to do. We just like to know, and again, know that some of you are in a position to support us, I don't know if you all are, but we elect people to try to represent us and our needs, and right now, we need to get into our homes. They're completed in many cases. They need last-minute touching, touching up, and spring, we really thought we had a definite move-in date, and here it's obvious. And again, I know some of this is beyond your control, we understand that, but at the end of the meeting, after the three-page list, the deputy supervisor, whom I'm very disappointed is not here, said, don't expect anything to happen because there's a lot more that has to be done, there will be more lists, there will be more requirements, it's going to take us a while to review all the documents that need to be reviewed. You have this special meeting tonight. If those things are gathered, couldn't there be another special meeting before September or whenever it is to say, yes, the project is completed, we're going to have a date for you to move in? Do you realize what this is going to mean for the town in taxes? And you don't even have to maintain the roads or do anything over there, that's going to be taken care of by the HOA. The school district is ecstatic. They get all these taxes from us and no kids. I mean, that's a win-win. A lot of money going to Mahadusland to support our education. It's good for the town. I see you all nodding, I believe you agree. All I'm asking is after all these years, can we work together, please, to bring this project to completion? I know you want it to be successful, we want it to be successful. I don't know if projects normally take seven, eight, nine years, but I certainly didn't expect this one to, and I'm hoping before this winter, maybe? I prayed that we'd be in before winter, but that was last year. So hopefully before this year. So can we count on you folks to do what you can? That's all I'm asking. And I thank you for listening, and let's hope for the best. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is John Harmon, and I live at 23 Peter Drive. I would like my address to be 122 Whispering Pines. And I don't even know if that's going to be true because I guess the numbers of cottages are still up in the air, and might be 75 Whispering Pines. I wonder if that's something that could be taken care of. There are over 40 cottages owned by seniors waiting to move in. Seniors that want to live in the town of Rotterdam. There are over 130 on the waiting list from the next group of cottages to be offered. Think of that. 130 seniors are waiting for those cottages. I signed a contract with the developer August of 2023, so I'm just going to let you know what my situation is. It's been an entire year of waiting. My garage is filled with boxes, packed boxes. My movers have been patiently waiting to move the boxes and my furniture. My grandchildren have emptied my attic, thank God. My family photos and albums are all packed in the garage, and they've been packed there since March. My family room is filled with empty boxes, and they're waiting for the last-minute items from my kitchen and my sewing room. I have been given, I have, I have given most of my things to my family or the city mission, and have put many items right out on the street to be picked up for free. I need to sell my house, but I can't do that until my cottage is ready. My movers have said, every time I have put them off another month, they have replied to me very graciously and said, it's okay, we're here for you. I would love the board to say the same thing, we're here for you. I'm here tonight to find out what more needs to be done in order for the cottages to receive the COs. I have seen your three-page itemized list, and my understanding is that the developer is working on it. If you have an additional list, I hope you share it with the developer and with us.
Thank you. Kathy Yando?
My name's Kathy Yando. I literally live in Eldolin right now for 37 years and have been very happy to live there, but was hoping that I would feel as happy to come here too. And I do believe in the best of people, I was a social worker my whole life, and I guess I want, I second both of those things, that, those pictures, because everything, at the end of the day, that's what we want. We want to be in our houses. But I think there's a negative, there seems to have been, there's this negative tension, and maybe I'm reading it wrong, but as a social worker, I don't know. And it seems like a we against them thing, and with us kind of in the middle as the people that want to live there, I've had people ask me, do they hate the developer? Do, did he do something wrong to them? I mean, I have no idea, and I'm not saying that's the case or not the case, but I went to many planning board meetings, and we didn't get some of those smiles that just happened that, and we didn't get any of those, or very little of those. So I appreciate you people smiling and nodding and knowing that we're having a hard time, but I just, is there something else? I just really wonder, and obviously you're not going to answer that question, but I hope you can all look, as members of the board, you know, you took an oath, some kind of oath, to say I am going to be here for the people and these people, and, you know, there's a lot of us, these are the people that could come. Like she said, there's 40 houses of people all waiting to come in. My house is in a Walker, and we are in a two-story, and we really need to get into that one story. So lots of different reasons, I don't need to tell you my story as to why I need to get in there, because we're all senior citizens and we're all ready to have some fun, and we worked our lives and we want to do fun things. I wish Mr. Dobson was here too, because I do have a question. It's hard for me to go back and read some of the things that I read about somebody that was so vocally against this project being on the town board. I'm not throwing any stones, but it makes, just makes one wonder, like, he lived near there, he didn't want this project. So does he not want it now? Is he doing something behind the scenes? I hope not, because each of you also have a job, and I'm sure none of you want to be complacent. I remember one of my first jobs when there was a very negative person working with me, and the, my supervisor said, Kathy, you keep withdrawing, and you're not actively in the group to participate with everyone else, and change doesn't happen unless we all work together. So that's what I'm hoping, I'm hoping you're working together. Same questions, can we please, you know, if there's stuff we can do, that three-page thing, which, this is the number I heard from the developer, 95%, you know, not my number, was cosmetic, like white grout versus tan grout. So we're talking about it being operational, okay? So to be operational, it means it needs to work. It doesn't mean that this is a half an inch longer than this thing. The generator was not up yet, I agree, that might definitely be, but we were told that it was going to be, well, last week we were told it was going to be in an, so maybe it is. So same question as everybody else has, please help us. Know that we will be really good residents of Rotterdam. And again, no taxes, no children, you know, here to help you. Active people that want to be in your environment and pursue and be kind and get along. Okay, I'm done.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Richard Yingling?
I'm Richard Yingling, I live on 1049 Eugene Drive over in Rotterdam. It's hard to add anything to what's already been said this evening, they've pretty much summed it all up. I've been around new construction for almost 40 years, I've never seen any developments drag on like this. I'm not going to point fingers since the person I'd like to speak to tonight is not here, but I agree that, I believe that for, since the inception of this project and its public record, this person's been against it, and I hope that we can move forward and it doesn't keep going on being hung up and not moving forward. The piddly little things that still need to get done, the developer is willing to bend over backwards to get them done, the town needs to take closer looks, get the COs issued as shortly as possible. I feel bad for the people here. My wife and I have not sold our house yet, and I don't tend to until they start our house, and we know we're going to absolutely have a closing date, and I won't even do that until I know other COs have already been granted by the town, because I don't trust the process anymore. But then we'll sell our house. But a lot of these people have been uprooted, they're without their houses, they're living in apartments, they're living with their children, some people have been in hotels, it's just a myriad of all kinds of things. So the town needs to work closely with the developer, get this project going, be done with it, and put it behind us. Seven years is absolutely ridiculous.
Thank you. Wayne Fitzgerald?
Good evening, Board, my name is Wayne Fitzgerald, and I am currently living in a hotel, formerly a resident of Rotterdam at 328 Sherrill Drive. We sold our house about a year ago with the expectation of being in December, and then we, we understand that it's not a one-way street. We know that the town has their responsibility, and the builder has his responsibility, and together you have to work as a team for our benefit, because you're both working for us. I want to tell you a quick little story. I used to work for Tony DePaul at DePaul Chevrolet back when I was still here in Schenectady, I was the body shop manager, and Ronnie Bruce was the new car salesman, or the used car salesman manager, and there was an 84 Corvette that had a scratch on the door, and Tony was going on vacation, and he said, when I get back, I want that car on the lot. Now, those days, painters or mechanics, they worked for Book, so Book would pay you about an hour to paint the door on a Corvette, not enough, because you're only getting about $30 as a painter, not good. So I wouldn't do it, he wouldn't pay anymore. So Tony gets back, and he says, why, why is that car still in the used lot and it's still scratched? Called us in his office, sat down, I pointed my fingers at Ron, Ron pointed his fingers at me, and said, tell you what, guys, if you guys figure it out, or we'll get somewhere, I'll get somebody who can. And that goes for, I think you get the message there, you guys got to work with us. Somebody on the board, we need to take control of the project. We know you guys are busy, this is a part-time government. When I looked at that 661-page document last week, a few documents that I have to sit through for just our project, takes an enormous amount of time. I don't know how you do it, I don't really care. What I care about right now is us getting out of a hotel and into a home. We are literally 60, I'm 65, and I don't tell you how old my wife is, she is younger. But anyway, I've never been, you know, I've never been home, I'm, we're literally homeless, we do not have a home to go home to. And living as a transient with a ton of money to spend really sucks. So there's stories of one list, two lists, three lists. What's the most important things have to be done? What's the holdup on the number line? That's a bad deal. When all three agencies that you have to satisfy and make sure that they know where we are come to you and let them say, leave it alone, it's your last week's agenda, it shouldn't be, you know, it shouldn't even need to be, well, it maybe does because that's the rules, but it should be a no-brainer, that's, that's a solved issue. You got your fire chief, your EMS people, I've seen the letters, you've got your manual one saying, hey, this makes more sense, just put up a couple of signs, and they go this way for these numbers and this way for these numbers. So little things like that. When a list shows up here last week, on 814, dated 814, from Lobella, and I worked with Lobella when I was the operations manager, I was involved in the sewer project from the very beginning, when that list shows up from Lobella, Michael Connors, John O'Neil, one of both, and it comes through, I never ever received a list from them that didn't have somebody's signature on it, and it just shows up here, 814, the builder doesn't even have it yet, and I have it in my hand before the builder, I'm sorry, that stinks, something's wrong there, okay? You'd feel the same way if you were standing here. So we're just looking for you guys to see, as others have mentioned, we have suspicion, we might be wrong. Prove us wrong, help us get into our homes. Somebody take the reins and say, you know what, I'm going to make this my full-time job over the next week to make sure that I know what needs to be done, that the builder knows what needs to be done, and that we're going to communicate that somehow to be representative of our group, so we can, my group will say, we're going to be there. And I'm on it. So I appreciate you taking, you know, listening to me, you're worth your time, and again, looking at the smaller group of representatives that are able to make the time, we really look forward to somebody standing up and sending me an email, calling me and saying, let's sit down and talk, we're having open house over there on Sunday, if you can make it, stop in. The members are going to be there, Lou is going to be there, we're going to be discussing this, on a firsthand view of how many people are involved, and what their stories are, and what they look like, and what they've been through, stop by and see us.
Thank you. That's it, Molly? That's it. All right, then I'm closing privilege of the floor, and we'll go on with our resolutions. Our first resolution is Resolution 231 of the year 2024, Clerk will read.
To appoint Brian Dupick to the position of Senior Wastewater Treatment Plant Operator part-time.
Okay, is there any discussion? Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mrs. Galucci, do I have a second? I have a second, go ahead.
I'll second.
Mr. Schlag, second. On the question, Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Dobson is absent. Mr. Mastriani?
Yes.
Mrs. Galucci?
Yes.
Mr. Schlag?
Yes.
And Mrs. Collins?
Yes.
Four yes, one absent.
Resolution passes. Our next resolution is Resolution 232 of the year, yes, 232 of the year 2024, Clerk will read.
To appoint Deborah Scharf to the position of clerk.
Is there any discussion? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Schlag, do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Mrs. Galucci, on the question, Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Dobson is absent. Mr. Mastriani?
Yes.
Mrs. Galucci?
Yes.
Mr. Schlag?
Yes.
And Mrs. Collins?
Yes.
Four yes, one absent.
Resolution passes. Our next resolution is Resolution 233 of the year 2024, Clerk will read.
To appoint Joseph Disco Jr. to the position of Wastewater Treatment Plant Operator Training.
Is there any, I'm sorry, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mrs. Galucci, do I have a second?
I'll second.
So by Mr. Mastriani, and I did mess that up actually, first, is there any discussion on this? Not a motion, which are made by Mrs. Galucci and Mr. Mastriani, on the question, Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Dobson is absent. Mr. Mastriani?
Yes.
Mrs. Galucci?
Yes.
Mr. Schlag?
Yes.
And Mrs. Collins? Four yes, one absent.
Resolution passes. Next resolution is Resolution 234 of the year 2024, Clerk will read.
To amend Resolution 292.24 of the year 2024, to appoint Sean Priva to the position of Wastewater Treatment Plant Operator Training.
Okay, is there any discussion? Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mrs. Galucci, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Mastriani, on the question, Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Dobson is absent. Mr. Mastriani?
Yes.
Mr. Mrs. Galucci?
Yes.
Mr. Schlag?
Yes.
And Mrs. Collins?
Yes.
Four yes, one absent.
Resolution passes. Resolution 335 of the year 2024, Clerk will read.
To approve budget transfers of gas and diesel to the 2024 budget.
Is there any discussion? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Schlag, do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Mrs. Galucci, on the question, Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Dobson is absent. Mr. Mastriani?
Yes.
Mrs. Galucci?
Yes.
Mr. Schlag?
Yes.
And Mrs. Collins?
Yes.
Four yes, one absent.
Resolution passes. Resolution 336 of the year 2024, Clerk will read.
To authorize the purchase of one WaterPoint PLD2 Weak Noise Correlator System.
Is there any discussion? Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mrs. Galucci, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Schlag, on the question, Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Dobson is absent. Mr. Mastriani?
Yes.
Mrs. Galucci?
Yes.
Mr. Schlag?
Yes.
And Mrs. Collins?
Yes.
Four yes, one absent.
Resolution 337 of the year 2024, Clerk will read.
Authorize the supervisor to negotiate and execute a temporary agreement with the City of Schenectady to provide city personnel at the town's wastewater treatment plant.
Is there any discussion? Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Schlag, do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Mrs. Galucci, on the question, Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Dobson is absent. Mr. Mastriani?
Yes.
Mrs. Galucci?
Yes.
Mr. Schlag?
Yes.
And Mrs. Collins? Four yes, one absent.
Resolution passes. And that concludes our resolutions for this evening. And now, does anyone, any of the board members have anything to say under the way of economic development?
Molly, I have a few under economic development. There was a press release that was, that came out the other day to tell us that CDTI is a new company that's, that's coming into Rotterdam, so we're really excited about that, and it will bring 200 high-paying jobs, and it's going to go on industrial parks. So we, you know, one of the things that we're doing with the, with business currently is, is just really honing our relationships with the Metroplex and the Chamber and, you know, Discover, Schenectady, that's, that's something that we hadn't done in the past very well, and I, I think it's been very beneficial just with this, this one business coming in. So there is a lot more to come, and another reason why this is wonderful, it's tax-based. You know, this is exactly what we need to lower our taxes, and having high-paying jobs come into Rotterdam is, is only going to be beneficial to all the residents. So, you know, along with, you know, the development that we're, this is another, is another positive. Another, I also met with the Association of Towns last week, and I, I did talk a little bit about this at the last meeting, but I wanted, we didn't have enough time really, I didn't feel like I expressed enough of the positives that happened in that meeting. So the Association of Towns, for those of you who don't know, every single town in the area participates in this, and, you know, the benefit to that is that we can look across the board at what are our challenges. So Chris Kettel will be joining them, and he's just going to be a breath of fresh air, so he had four important priorities that they were going to focus on. One was increase the aid incentives for municipalities, which will really help us. The other one is there's a CHIPS program that helps with our roadways, and they're going to focus on getting all of the towns, you know, an added amount from, from the CHIPS program, and then dedicated water and sewer fund, not grants, an actual dedicated fund, so that will really help us out too. And then workforce development, so as we're talking tonight, you know, people are, are moving around, or we're just having a really hard time finding employees, and, you know, the help that we're going to get from Association of Towns in collaboration with all of the other towns will really help us. Other key topics of discussion there was the Rapid Act, which is really, you know, affecting everybody. Energy was huge. I would say almost 100% of the people in the room were very excited about our solar code that we just approved, and, you know, they're all faced with this energy, this new energy that's coming with, with tons of money behind it, and nobody is against the solar entity or batteries, they're just trying to make sure that this is done properly because it's new. And, and so we have to be a little bit strict with, you know, our regulations just to protect our residents. So more to come with that, but, and in conjunction with that, we did recently have two fires with, with solar. One was on Rice Road not too long ago. When I dug into that, it was the electric panel that, that was the problem, but as many people know, if solar panels catch on fire, you know, it's really detrimental to the surrounding area, especially if it's near residential, and it's also detrimental to our firefighters or anybody who's responding, our first responders. So it's important that we get that right. As I dug into it, the signage at the gate was not well-marked. This is something that came in prior to, to us having our solar code, and, and when I called the company, they don't record an actual fire from their perspective, all they can tell, so they don't know what's happening. They only know that it stopped producing energy. So these are the things that when, when we're looking at code and we're looking at how we roll this out with this massive push, it's really important that we do this right to protect our residents. And so this was all really good news, and I want to say everybody at this meeting was super interested in what Rotterdam's doing. We are a leader in this area, and you should be really proud of the other residents that are on this committee and donate their time so that, you know, we're, we're doing the right things. And we will flex and change based on, you know, what's happening with the state, and we're watching that closely, and so I wanted to let you know that we are working hard for you. Feet on the street, I spent an entire day with a whole bunch of ambassadors from the Chamber, and so they came from all other towns, and, and they really just hit the street with me, and we went to visit businesses and listened to what owners, you know, listened to the issues that they have, you know, they all had remarkable insights, some of them have been here for a very, very long time, generations, and so I'm listening, and you know...